Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pleasure of allegiance, and we invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight's meeting is being conducted in person and online. All council members are in the chamber along with our staff. Members of the public may attend in person or watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or on Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. All of the information about our meeting is available in our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is announcements and proclamations, and we have two proclamations this evening. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, May 2nd, and Tuesday, May 16th, at 5:30 p.m. Work sessions are scheduled for Tuesday, May 9th, at 5:30 p.m. We have a closed session for security training tonight, April 18th, at 6:00 p.m. in Dakota B. We also have a special work session, and it is our quarterly roundtable, and that's on Tuesday, April 25th, at 6:00 p.m. in Dakota B. Unless noted, all meetings are held here in the council chambers. So I will go to that side to do the proclamations. I will do the Earth Day and Arbor Day proclamation first because the other is that we want to make sure that we have a picture with the executive director of our experience Burnsville. So, but our proclamation for Earth Day and Arbor Day is April 29th. Whereas Burnsville has taken great pride in the quality of our natural environment, including the beautiful shade trees and native plants that provide many essential services to the community and enrich our lives in many ways. And whereas the City of Burnsville Sustainability Plan lays out the foundation for the city's continuing sustainability efforts and addresses preservation and expansion of tree resources. We need to practice safe environmental approaches in managing our forests, lakes, wetlands, and other spaces. And whereas Burnsville promotes development that maintain or enhance economic opportunity and community well-being while protecting and restoring the natural environment. And whereas the purpose of the Earth Day Arbor Day celebration is to emphasize the importance of preserving our natural environment through sustainable activities such as recycling, waste reduction, and resource conservation. Whereas Burnsville recognizes the need to protect and preserve the beauty of our community by promoting good stewardship of our natural environment for future generations. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2022, as Earth Day and Arbor Day in the City of Burnsville. In celebration, the city hosts an annual community tree sale at the end of April. Learn more online at www.burnsvillemn.gov/treesale. Proclaim this 18th day of April 2022. The next proclamation is Tourism Awareness Week. Whereas tourism and hospitality has been the foundation of a healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in the U.S., supporting close to 15,000 Dakota County jobs. And whereas leisure and hospitality in Minnesota is an 11.7 billion industry, employing more than 205,000 people, generating $731 million in state sales and taxes. Whereas in the past year, every sector of the travel industry has started to recover after the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas this rebound of travel will drive the rebuilding of the U.S. economy and American workforce. And whereas tourism and hospitality in Burnsville provides full-time and part-time employment for the citizens of our city. And whereas the Experience Burnsville dedicated itself for 36 years to stimulating visitor traffic to Burnsville area, creating income for both the leisure and hospitality industry and the general business community. And whereas the City of Burnsville takes great pride in welcoming hospitality, it shows its guests. Now therefore, I Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim this week of May 7 through the 13th, 2023, to be National Travel and Tourism Week in the City of Burnsville, and urge citizens to celebrate this special event proclaimed this 18th day of April 2023. And if Ms. Amy Burrell from the Experience Burnsville would come up and receive this, and then we're going to just go over there to take a picture.
Yes.
You have to be able to see.
Everybody that's tall always says right in the middle.
This is the opportunity for anyone that would like to address the council on an item that is not on a printed agenda and not an application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Anyone in the audience? Mrs. Collins, anyone on Zoom?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will then move on. The next item is for emergency items only. This is additions to the final agenda, and it's only for emergency items. City Manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Members of the council, thank you. We will then move on. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Anyone who wishes to remove an item? Mrs. Collins, anyone on Zoom?
No one online, Mayor.
Okay. City Manager Lindberg, any item from staff to be removed?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Still moved.
There is a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you. We now will move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is Item 5A, and this is a public hearing, and it is a resolution adopting the 2022 Code Enforcement Assessments. Presenting this evening is Christopher Forsland. He's our licensing and code enforcement coordinator. Mr. Forsland.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Tonight is a public hearing for the 2020 assessments for code enforcement. A little bit of background on this is our city policy 5020 provides for recovery of costs associated with any code enforcement services. Those code enforcement services may be reinspection fees, costs for abatement like grass mowing, and administrative citation fees. The city is allowed to assess these fees by state law and recover some of the costs for our code enforcement services. Part of the process is prior to any of these fees or fines being assessed, we've worked with property owners who have had any code violations through sending them notices, letting them know what the corrective actions were, what we needed them to do, prior to those fees and charges being assessed. And when they're not corrected or continue, then we perform additional inspections or, again, additional services such as mowing. The timeline for 2023, 2022 this year, we basically took the whole year from January 1st to December 31st and put it into one for this year. So that's a little bit different. We did send initial notices out on February 8th. We sent final notices out on March 24th, and we also had an open house in City Hall here for any of the affected property owners to come in and try to answer any of their questions they may have or to resolve any of those expenses. We had nobody show up at that hearing or open house. The public hearing here is to provide an opportunity for owners to address any questions, concerns with those costs. Last year's 2020 assessment total charges are 2,090. That's a little bit less than what we originally had. We had some late-minute payments come in, and I suspect it may even drop a little bit more before that. This will include, again, all unreimbursed charges for all of last year, but it does not include any costs associated with still unresolved litigation. So recommendation to hold a public hearing, and we recommend adoption of the assessments for 2022 as proposed.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Forsland? Councilmember Gustafson.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this seems like the lowest one I've ever seen come through as unfair assessments. And that's a whole year's worth?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody is complying. They've gotten used to what we're doing.
We've, I think, reached out a lot more to, you know, everybody's still recovering somewhat, and I think that's had a difference.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, it's also great that you all are doing great neighborhood services.
Thank you.
Because that's what we're here to do, is to educate and to help. So very good. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I will now open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Yeah, this is for code enforcement. Yes, please give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Ronaldson, 13202 James Avenue South, Burnsville. Okay, as one of these special assessments, are these complaints by the tenants, or is it just city enforcement?
Mr. Forsland.
It's probably for general code enforcement, would include rentals. Without knowing the specifics of the case, I can't answer that one 100%.
So you can't tell me if it's the tenants complaining or if it's you just trying to enforce code?
Well, tenants' complaint don't necessarily result in a violation. I mean, it has to be verified first.
Yeah, and I'm asking you, is this due to tenant complaints?
It could be.
But you don't know.
Not without going through the specific case.
Don't you think you should know?
We have many cases. We have hundreds of cases. But I'd be glad to look it up if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like you to look it up.
Okay. And what was your address again?
13202 James Avenue South.
Yeah, I can look that up afterwards.
And some of that is also neighbors complaining.
Right.
Yeah. So those are some of the things that, how that comes to our attention. So, so Mr. Forsland will talk with you and we'll take a look at your particular record.
Yeah, I'm not involved in any of this, but I'm just, it's more for, you know, I'm just wondering if it's tenants or if the city, you know, you start off with this rental license that started off $100, then it goes up, and then you're coming in and doing inspections, and the cost just keeps going up.
So I have a question because perhaps two issues are getting conflated. So what this is, is so like I live in my house, and I didn't cut my grass, and my neighbor Nark saw me, and they come over and they're like, yes, Kara, shame on you, no grass cutting. And then I get a fine for it. So this is not specific to rental properties. This is more things like you left your garbage can out, you got peeling paint, like those kind of things just throughout the city. It's not specific to rentals or not rentals. It's just, like, in general.
Okay, okay, that clarifies it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah, this is something altogether different. That will come up, and then you can speak when the rental licensing item comes up. This is not rental license. This is enforcement for assessments.
Okay.
Yeah. Come back up when it's that subject.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just point of clarification, it does include some apartment properties.
Yeah.
But it's not, but it's not about rental license.
It's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's coming up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Collins, anybody on Zoom?
No one online, Mayor.
Okay, all right. I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Councilmember Workman makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gustafson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries.
Abstain.
One abstention.
Thank you.
The next item is also a public hearing, and this is a resolution vacating a portion of Cliff Road right-of-way for Kramer Mining and Materials. Presenting is our city engineer, Jen Deserud. Mrs. Deserud.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this will be a public hearing tonight. I have a short presentation. So Kramer Mining Materials located, a portion of their site located where I have located on the map, has requested a vacation of a right-of-way. So we received an application making this request. And the request is to vacate this Cliff Road right-of-way that is over the top of their private road. In doing their research with title companies, the city, the county, it was not determined how this came to be, and so this is really a cleanup item from probably the 60s whenever it was acquired for right-of-way. But the city is not maintaining that road, and we're not, it's gated, so we don't really have access to it. But there is a water main that we do need to have a utility over, so we're vacating the right-of-way, but we are retaining a utility easement to cover just the utility that we have. So the staff recommendation is to approve the vacation of right-of-way, dedicate the easement, with the condition to dedicate a utility easement over that existing utility. We don't anticipate any utility relocations, but if some were to be determined or found, then it would be, if relocation were needed, it would be at the applicant's cost.
Okay. Members of council, any questions for Mrs. Deserud? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Mayor, would close the public hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
No, move to approve.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you. The next item is to order the Heart of the City Trail Connection from Pleasant to Pillsbury. And presenting this evening is Mrs. Jen Deserud, city engineer. Mrs. Deserud.
Yeah, so we are looking, I'm going to do a short presentation on this trail project as well. In our multimodal plan that was before the council in October of 2021, and our Heart of the City Public Space Guidelines, that was also before the city council in December of 2022, we show a proposed connection in the location south of the Real Life Co-op, north of the ISD 191 property between the Pleasant and Pillsbury. So we have an existing sidewalk network. Everything in blue is an existing sidewalk. And we also know that we have a couple of apartment buildings that are under construction right now. So the Villas were approved at 135 units, Concord Flats at 162 units, and then we have the Gateway Housing Second Edition Platte that the council approved, where they're proposing approximately 111 units, all in that sort of triangle-shaped piece. So just looking at it from the perspective of using the existing sidewalk network, a new resident to one of those apartment buildings, the red dot shows how they would get to Nicholas Commons Park from their apartment building. And it's not very straight or direct, but that's how they would, using the sidewalk network on city public sidewalks. The yellow dot is, I think, the more direct route, and what people will tend to do, we believe, is just cut right through the property, that green space on the south side of the Real Life Co-op. So in July of 2022, a couple of residents with the Real Life Co-op and I met to talk about the concerns of people cutting through, dog walking happening, people cleaning up the dog waste, things like that. And then I presented to the Real Life Co-op in October of 2022, similar slide, saying this is kind of what we expect would happen, is people, as we have more residents on that west side, wanting to get to sort of the activities in the heart of the city, that they'll likely cut through because that's the most direct route. The Real Life Co-op had some questions, though. What does this mean? How will the impacts be to the property? And so we got permission to collect some survey data from the property with permission from Real Life and ISD 191 in November of 2022, so that we could come up with a little bit more of a detailed concept. And this is our preliminary layout based on that topography. There is potentially 21 trees that would have to be removed with the project. And then in talking with the Real Life Co-op, I mean, that was a major concern, was the loss of mature trees. We talked about privacy fence, I think that's on my next slide anyway. So this is the route that would be, and we would need a 20-foot easement from them in order to accomplish this. So with that concept, I went back to the Real Life Co-op in February and had more of a Q&amp;A. I didn't have a prepared presentation. I had that preliminary concept layout. We discussed the easement needs, 20-foot easement needed for the 10-foot trail, the tree removal and replacement, in that if we removed a tree, we would plant a tree, one for one. They were interested in having some privacy fencing to really delineate the public trail and then their private property. And then we talked about future maintenance, and as with all of our trails, we do maintain them. So all of those questions were answered, and then in March, the Real Life Co-op residents voted, do they want to continue conversations about this easement acquisition and trail? And they did vote to move forward with continuing conversations, getting an appraisal for the easement and things like that. So we have a project budget of about $800,000 in park dedication funding. We did obtain park dedication payments for all of those new apartments, so kind of utilizing those funds towards this project. We have it in the CIP for 2020, spread out in over three years, so 2023, 24, and 25. If timing were right, we would, in spring and summer, start to negotiate an easement acquisition with the Real Life Co-op, working with, public engagement with ISD 191, and complete plans and specs. In late summer, we could bid the project and then have a fall construction. That would be, if all the timing aligned, it's possible that we would slip into a spring 2024 construction, depending on how easement negotiations were to go, and if the Real Life Co-op were still interested in pursuing it as we developed the plans. So I'm available to answer any questions. The staff recommendation is to order the project, as noted, and we'll continue to work with the Real Life Co-op and have public engagement.
Thank you. I just want to thank you because when the two projects that are being built right now happened, one of the things that you also brought to us at a work session was this trail. And then I know that the folks from Real Life were also very interested in making sure that their property, because they also saw that it was going to create a lot of traffic through, and that we work with them to find a better solution than just having people cut through their property. So I think, and I see some head nodding, because they have also, they contacted me about wanting to make sure that they work with us. So thank you so much for all the work that you have done, and that's identified in your outline today. You've done a great job in really identifying all of that. So members of the council, any other questions for Ms. Deserud? Yes, Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. Jen, was there any discussion about lighting in this area, or if that would be a dark space at night?
We have preliminarily looked at some pedestrian-level lighting. We don't have it totally scoped, but that is part of the preliminary cost estimate is to include lighting.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think we want that to be lit up, especially because that was one of the concerns from Real Life, is all of the people cutting through. But having a designated path that's constructed and lighting, that's going to help them also. Any other questions? Members of the council, we need a motion to approve the project.
Move to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. You've worked on it for a long time, and thank you so much for your dedication and for, you know, working through all of this. I know it wasn't very easy for all of you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item 5D, and 5D is to order the Heart of the City and Multifamily Parking Study. And this is, again, presented by our city engineer, Mrs. Jen Deserud.
Thank you again. So just as overview, we did bring the Heart of the City Public Space Guide So just as overview, we did bring the Heart of the City Public Space Guidelines before the council in December, and parking was one of the chapters that was discussed. And then in the implementation plan was also, a parking study was presented as a near-term improvement, or a near-term activity. So the near-term action item was to create a Heart of the City District Parking Management Plan that considers long-term parking needs for the district expansion and redevelopment, overnight on-street parking policy for the Heart of the City, and shared parking policies. And then in September of 2022, the council had some conversations about multifamily parking, and a request was made to expand the scope to include multifamily parking study as well. So we reached out to our consultant to work on a scope of work that was both for the Heart of the City and multifamily. Here's the general outline of the scope, reviewing our code, the Heart of the City Public Space Guidelines, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE, Urban Land Institute, ULI. They have all parking guidelines documents, sort of a review, and then collect parking data. So having staff, or their staff, counting cars, seeing who's parked where. The parking data collection will occur during peak Ames Center events overnight, so trying to get a range of what the parking needs are during various events and times of day. We have a stakeholder and public engagement component, where we will do a pop-up open house at one of our Heart of the City events and ask people, what do they think about parking, and try and get some feedback on that. And then from the multifamily part of it, interviewing, we have a focus group interviewing the building managers and some of the residents to see what are their parking issues that they're dealing with. And then for Heart of the City, they'll have analysis and recommendations, and for multifamily parking management, recommendations and a toolkit to be used. Because not, when you have multifamily projects throughout the city, you can't have like a one-size-fits-all. So they're coming up with a toolkit that we can use and apply to various situations. At the time, we had scoped the project, it was just for the Heart of the City part, and so that was estimated to be around $75,000. But with the additional scope, it's now up to $95,000. So the staff recommendation is to order the Heart of the City and Multifamily Parking Study and adjust the project budget from $75,000 to $95,000.
Any questions for Mrs. Desrude? If there are no questions on this, and you've done and followed through, because I remember discussions about, because there've been complaints about the parking in Heart of the City, and especially when we have big events at the Ames Center, and then of course with the Mediterranean Cruise, and we have an agreement with them with the shared parking model and so forth. So, and now with all of the apartment buildings that are going up, it appears that a lot of the residents in some of our multi-housing units are parking in the Heart of the City parking, which creates a lot of problems. Okay, so members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you so much, Mrs. Desrude. Okay. The next item is item 5E. This is the ordinance adopting the revisions to City Code Title III, Chapter 28, Rental Licensing, Title IV, Building Regulations, and Title V, Fire Regulations. Presenting this evening is our city clerk, Mrs. Michelle Collins, and our fire chief, Mr. B.J. Joe Man. And the first item is going to be presented.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll key this up right away for us. And then I do want to mention that we would like for the council to adopt this in three separate motions. One for the Title III, Chapter 28 Rental Licensing ordinance, one for the Title IV and V ordinance, and then one for the authorizing of the summary publication. All the substantial changes were noted in your background. I stand for any questions. Chief Jungman also has some information for us.
Okay. Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Happy to be before you to propose some rental license ordinance changes that we've been working on with staff in the Code Review Task Force over the last six, eight months. I just want to take us back a little bit to where we started with rental licensing a number of years ago. We've made some unfortunate news over the years, and, you know, a number of our fires in our apartment complexes have made headlines for different reasons. And, you know, the last census reminded us that over 40% of our residents live in rental housing, and we know that that number is continuing to increase. And this is just kind of what we're trying to prevent. From my perspective, this is, this is the worst-case scenario, is we end up with these fires. We know that a large number of our buildings are non-springled, and these fires propagate quickly, putting police and fire staff in hazardous conditions, trying to evacuate residents out of these structures. So I'll show you some data at the end of this, but, but these are the catastrophes that we're trying to prevent. And so kind of where we're at is, we have numerous rental properties with code violations. This is not just a one-off. It's really become a resource constraint on being able to address them and having enhanced enforcement. Over 50% of our multifamily buildings don't have fire sprinkler systems. I would tell you as the fire chief, these are our highest life safety risk buildings and occupancies in our city. These are the ones that I'm worried about, that can both injure and kill residents and firefighters. And we have a number of our buildings that are 40 to 50 years old. They were built under previous codes that didn't require a lot of the same standards we have today. When we look at the historical challenges we have here, there's five things that stand out to me, is the number of firefighter injuries that we see in these buildings, the number of civilian injuries that we've seen, the displaced residents it comes to, the substantial fire loss, and the image it creates for our city. And really, the proposal tonight's really about caring for our community, our residents, and our staff. When I look at these things, and the fire department and code folks look at this, we really have five modalities to reducing risk in our community. Education, engineering, enforcement, economic, and emergency response. The first four are the preventative ways that we can approach these, and we look for tools to try to stay away from the fifth, because that's a reactive mode, and things are gone at that point, and we're just trying to mitigate how bad it is at that point. So really, our focus with these changes is how do we look at those top four to reduce the fifth from happening? So when we looked at this, what are the things that we are seeing that are life safety risks that are common across a number of properties that we're seeing? We're seeing fire doors that are not rated. I know you saw this picture on the left not that long ago. They took a fire door and put a non-rated fire door. Now, there's a rated fire door back in there, but it took us making them do that. This one on the right came in the last two weeks. That's in a hallway. It was a rated fire door. When they replaced it, they put a hollow corridor in there and took the rating label off the previous door and reattached it to a non-rated door. We have doors that don't latch. I know all of you have seen post-fire buildings. This is how smoke propagates, and this is how people end up being injured, is when we have smoke go throughout these buildings, and the fire doors need to close and latch. That's, that and the sheet rock are the only two things that keep that fire and that smoke from propagating throughout the building. We have doors without closers. Again, simple things that can be fixed. Sheet rock that's not intact. Again, one of the two things that keeps fire and smoke from propagating and injuring more people. Trash chute doors that don't close, and garbage rooms that are overflowing and don't have the appropriate fusible link to close it when there is a fire. We've also seen sprinkler systems and alarm systems that aren't serviced. Due to the age of the buildings, we're seeing fire protection systems at or near the end of their serviceable life, and garage carbon dioxide ventilation that's inoperable. And I can tell you that last one becomes a big deal. You get a car fire in a garage and a tuck-under garage, which is common in what we have, it is night-and-day difference between when the ventilation system works and when it doesn't. We had a car fire in one that worked the other day, and you can literally walk in there and put the fire out. And the good part about that is not just for the responders, but if there's residents in that garage, when that car fire happens, they can get to the exits. What we're finding is when we have some of these, they don't work, and that whole building is, or that whole garage is charged with smoke, and now all the stairwells get charged with smoke. So now our problem isn't just in the garage, it moves throughout the building. So what does this mean for us? What, what are we seeing? Why are we here? So when you look at this, since 2004, it doesn't look like much. You look at some ups and downs, right? But there's, there's little variation in the number of occurrences. And that doesn't tell the story. The story is really about how do we attenuate the severity and the impact? This is where we start to see what happens. The bottom graph is the 2004 to 2007. The light green is firefighter injuries. The dark green is civilian fatalities, and the blue is civilian injuries. So from 2004 to 2007, you didn't see any firefighter injuries. We saw some civilian fatalities and civilian injuries. From '08 till '11, we saw quite a bit of firefighter injuries. We saw civilian fatalities, and we saw significant civilian injuries. And that's when we implemented the first version of the rental ordinance before, that we currently have intact today. So then following that, we saw a commensurate decrease in firefighter injuries, civilian fatalities, and civilian injuries. Now what's concerning to me is when we start to look at the last six years and seven years, we're starting to see that trend go up on civilian injuries. And my concern is, as we start to see that civilian injury trend go up, it starts to introduce the risk of civilian fatalities in these buildings. So I think it's important that we consider that as we're looking at these, these reforms, because we want to get ahead of these things. We don't want civilians injured or killed. We don't want firefighters injured or killed. We don't want to put anybody on any undue risk. And the best way we can do that is those four Es before we get to emergency response. And there is no silver bullet to any of this, but these are all tools in the toolbox to help us prevent this from happening. You can also look at it from an economic standpoint, and this is just purely fire loss. Again, you see some spikes here and there, but what I would tell you, from 2019 on, we're starting to start, see that upward trend. And I don't think that that's a one-off from some of these violations I've seen in the responses that we've gone on. So what I don't want to get us back to is that pre-2012 level, where we're seeing significant property and contents lost.
Chief, Councilmember Schultz has a question.
Okay, so you're starting to see some rise in contents and property in the 2022. Could you go into a little more detail over what that is and why that is happening?
Well, I mean, it's due to the fires, right? And more significant fires. So what you, what you see here is, if you remember back to the original number of fires, so what we're seeing, when we start to see the bigger losses, we're having more fires that are uncontained, right? So that's when we start to see them propagate beyond room of contents, and they start to go as we may see failures in systems. If you recall, last year, in 2022, we had a fire in an apartment building where the fire alarm system didn't sound, right? That thing got way beyond before anybody contacted us about that fire. So we're starting to see some of these critical failures that are allowing fires to get farther before we get to them.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. So it looks more like more units are being affected per fire in a multifamily living arrangement. Is that a correct characterization of the trend you're seeing?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yep. So within this ordinance, staff recommends, in, with support from the Code Review Task Force, four kind of pillars here. The first is to license individual managers. And again, like I said, not a one of these, and not everything we're going to do with a rental license ordinance is going to fix everything, but it's about giving staff the tools in the toolbox to use the right tool in the right situation. And why licensing managers is important? It'll require them to have education every year. We've, we, in the past, have provided education at our manager meeting and, and have encouraged that, but not necessarily required it. It gives the council the ability to suspend or revoke it, and without affecting the residents that live there. And I can tell you, we've had some less-than-desirable property managers that just go from one property to the next, to the next, and you watch that property fall into disrepair and start to have problems. It used to be a fine property, then that manager comes, and now it's a problem. We are providing at no cost to them. We don't propose any license fees for the managers, and we provide, we plan on providing that, that education to them at no cost. And so they will have an online ability to take the, the class, and then take a test, and then submit that they've, they've completed that.
Chief, two questions here. Councilmember Workman has a question, and then followed by Councilmember Schultz.
You kind of answered the question before I asked it, but maybe you can reiterate again, the financial implication seems to be the biggest concern in some of the emails that I've, we've gotten. The license, we're not charging for, the education, we're not charging for, aside from the paper, that documented self-inspection would be printed on. There's no added financial burden?
No, nothing, nothing we're proposing. The, Councilmember Workman, the one thing I would say is there are some increased proposed fees for the multifamily if they have significant life safety issues. So if we go in there and their fire alarm system is, is disabled, that's a $200 fine right there. Like, those significant life safety things, not like you have a small hole in the sheet rock, but we're finding life safety things that should have been repaired, there's a fine attached to that right up front.
And that's fully preventable.
Fully preventable.
If we're doing our jobs correctly, then we're not worrying about these issues popping up.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only increased fees that we've proposed.
And the license is to make sure that we're holding everybody accountable.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the idea is to set a standard, right? Here's a standard expectation that all of our managers will meet. The self-inspection component doesn't apply to single-family, only applies to multifamily that has a common corridor where these things would apply. It was a discussion at Code Review Task Force of whether the license, the management license should apply to single-family or only a certain level of multifamily, and the Code Review Task Force consensus was that if you're going to, if you're going to have a rental business in Burnsville, you should all have the same training and licensure, regardless of whether it's a single-family all the way through multifamily. And like I said, our goal is to make this as easy as possible and at no cost to the manager, because really our goal is the education. We want to take away the uninformed piece of this, right? So that they know what to do and what's expected to keep the residents safe.
Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, so the first one is, you said that the required education would be every year, but it says, still says, once every three years into here, under 3289, under additional requirements F. So it says, once every three years for education. So my question is, is it every year or is it every three years?
Aye. Councilmember Schultz, I may have misspoke to that, I'm sorry.
Okay, not a problem, just checking on that. The other thing I, I would ask is, could you walk us through what a documented self-inspection would look like? You're, you're the owner and property manager. You're going to do a self-inspection. What does that look like?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so we have a self-inspection checklist already published out on the website, so you can take that and go through it. And really, at the end of the day, we're looking for them to log that. We don't need the whole sheet of paper. We're just saying, when you go through that, there's common area items and there's exterior items. And all we want you to do is walk through, do the fire doors open and do they close all the way? Do the exit lights work? Are the smoke detectors intact? Are the fire extinguishers there? Do the doors open and close and latch? And, and you don't have to go through that whole checklist and check that each time. You just need to create a log that says, on April 18th, my initials, I completed this. And they don't even have to use our checklist, as long as it exceeds what our requirements are. My understanding that walking through your properties is an industry best practice already. We just want them to document it, so we know it's being done, and we can have that discussion with them if we show up and all of a sudden all the fire doors work and they're telling us they're walking through each week, right? And... work and they're telling us they're walking through each week, right? Um, and it, it gives us another opportunity to connect with them and say, are you really doing this, right? And hopefully get ahead of those things, so we don't come, come and have a dozen fire doors that don't work.
Okay, I just have a follow-up. So say we're in a single-family home. Um, they don't have common areas and that kind of stuff, so of course that would not be something that they would do. Um, but the requirement is that they do a documented self-inspection yearly, or if they have a tenant move out and before the new tenant moves in, correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct, yep. And that's what that checklist would be for. So once a year before we come do the inspection, we'd prefer they go through before we come and get all those things corrected. And then, um, if they have turnover of the residents, then they should also do that checklist. So yes, those are the two opportunities.
Okay, so now I'm a little, now I'm a little confused on that. So it's not just a documented self-inspection, it's also an inspection by city staff?
No, no, no. Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so the self-inspection is required when someone moves out and someone moves in, right? They're supposed to do the self-inspection.
Okay.
Annually, or I'm sorry, every three years in a single family, we do the inspection. Before we come to do that every third-year inspection, that's when we would want them to do it. They need to do it at least once a year, but we would recommend that they do it, so we don't show up and find that the smoke alarms don't have batteries in it, right? Like, it's prudent for them to do it. The requirement just says once a year. We would just hope that they would align that. And I know, uh, Mr. Forsland's folks recommend that they do that and give them that information of like, hey, we're coming out, here's where the self-inspection checklist is.
So, single-family homes currently are inspected by the city every three years?
That is correct.
So there's nothing changing on that?
Nope.
It's the same as it was?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Gustafson.
Thank you. Hi, Chief. Um, can owners of property be property managers?
That, Madam Mayor, members of the council, they can absolutely be property managers.
So, we got a couple that owns a home or two in Burnsville, and they can be their own property manager. They just need to take our continuing education.
Yep.
And that's at no charge.
That's at no charge, online. Again, we're working on creating that. We wanted this to pass before, stick staff time into that, but if, if this ordinance were to pass, that would be staff's next step, is to create an online, uh, uh, training session with a test at the end, and they complete that at no cost, and, and they can be licensed managers in here.
So, so the hardship, if there's a hardship, basically would do, do that three or four-hour training?
Correct. Madam Member of the council, that's correct.
And that's every year or every three years?
Every three years, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No, no, that's fine, I'm glad you got it, because.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Some of those photos did bring back some bad memories of a current situation that we're, that you've been working through. Um, I, I like the idea of licensing managers for free with a free training, because it is all about education, but that automatically holds them accountable, because they're now, uh, read in, they're educated, they're trained. Um, that can only benefit a lot of things for the residents, and this is all about, to me, this is all about the safety of the residents. Those people who choose to live in these multi-tenant apartment buildings, uh, it's their home, it's their sanctuary, it's where they go back every day from their work, their jobs and the pressure, and they need to know that they're living in a safe building that isn't, uh, at a high risk of, uh, a fire or, uh, or, or other things, mold, right, mildew, and, and, you know, things that we've seen in the photos. Um, I also like, you, you pointed out something that really caught my eye, and that's, uh, raising the penalties for the violators. I have maintained, since we started this rental licensing, that we have a lot of apartment owners who are excellent, um, managers, excellent owners. They rarely ever have anything. They address things instantly. They're proud of the properties, they're proud of having a safe, clean environment for their residents to come live. Um, one would think in today's world of reviews, that if you don't provide that, that you would have a hard time leasing out your, uh, your rental properties, but we also know that countering that, we have a huge shortage of housing, affordable housing, in many cases, or just housing selection. And so even the apartment complexes that are suffering from horrible conditions are almost fully leased, and that's unfortunate, uh, because they're being rewarded to be a bad player.
Yep.
And so our job comes in to say, we're not gonna allow that, and we have to put the tools in place to be able to, uh, do that. So I, I just want to see, I think the shift of the financial burden has to be even heavier on the violators. And the folks who run great operations, they should be inspected and have an opportunity, uh, to be inspected, but rewarded and acknowledged for their good performance without any additional fees. Um, it's really, this whole thing is, we're all, we're having this discussion, not because of the apartment complex that has no violations and runs a clean, great operation, it's because we have the exact opposite. We have apartment owners and managers running slumlord situations with horrible, as you fit, as you showed in the picture. That is the whole reason that we're having this discussion, and why we've had discussions like this recently. So I want the focus to be truly on the violators, uh, and that's where really the fines can get heavy, in my book, because it's clear that when the fine isn't very large, it's really unfortunate when you have people just continue to be a bad player, because the cost of being a bad player isn't severe enough to cause them to do the right thing and create a nice, safe environment for the residents and the people that live there. I mean, it's, it is about the safety of the people, and, and they don't deserve to live in some of these places, it's horrible. So I, I, I see what you're doing is in, all in the right direction to address these problems.
Well, Councilmember Keely and Councilmember Gustafson, if you recall, the residents of , uh, Country Village in 2011 had us as their last hope.
Yeah.
And they came here, uh, with their children, and they brought pictures. Not our staff, they brought the pictures of the conditions that they were living in. But our staff have been working with them for years, trying to get them to comply. And then finally, we had to step in and shut them down. But then the burden of the relocation of all of those people, our staff did that work in partnership with counties, both Dakota and Scott, you know? And so here we are again, and I really do not want to go back to having to deal with 2011 and what we had to do with all of the, what we had to do.
Agreed.
I mean, and to have those residents, and I can tell you, if the residents of these other buildings were told that we were having this meeting today, they would be here. Because they're the ones who come to us and say, you're our last hope, so.
Well, and, well put, and I, you know, you bring up a good point. Who, who advocates and speaks for the residents of Parkview? There's some that have stood up and reached out to us
Yep.
without fear, with, with fear, but strong enough, that the repercussions and the retribution by management
Yeah.
was not going to be worse than what they're living in right now.
Yep.
And, and it's not an easy thing to do.
No.
So for the folks of Country View to step up, and some of those at, at Parkview and these other places who are, we're gonna learn about, I understand, later on, that are, that are kind of in the same boat, um, you know, what national association group is actually advocating for them to have a safe, living environment?
No, legal aid.
No one. They're, it is us. They're coming to us, and they're our residents. They rent from the multifamily housing folks.
Right.
But they're our residents. Forty percent of them live in Burnsville. They're our constituents. We're their last hope.
I think it, you know, ultimately, it closes out. It's really unfortunate that we're in this position.
Yep.
It, I mean, I don't know how many cities have as many rental, uh, units as we do that are 40 and 50 years old, but it is, um, it is those companies and those property managers who have allowed their properties to get to the point where we have this crisis situation for these residents. And it's, you know, it's unfortunate that we're here, but we're gonna, well, it's our, it's our responsibility to do what it takes to, to correct it and turn it around, and to your point, uh, give you the tools to keep it from happening again. And, and education and, and a lot will, uh, will help, and obviously really stiff fines. Uh, but again, to my other side, I'm, I, I think this is all great to address those problem folks. The people who run a great, clean operation, you know, they deserve to be acknowledged for that and, and, uh, and, and just, uh, have their, have their properties looked at, but it's a whole different thing, right? They're not the problem.
Yep. Chief, please.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so that point is, we, we want to take incremental steps, because we do have some great operators in town, and that was the point of not putting a fee, making it online. How convenient can we make it for those folks that are running a good operation, might provide some value of education for them, but we didn't want it to be over onerous. Obviously, with the issues we've had, we could have come up with a lot more restrictive things to propose. Um, of note, I would just tell you that the Code Review Task Force, it wasn't the consensus, but there, there was a, a, one or two folks on there that did propose having significantly higher fees for some of this stuff, uh, for violations, significant violations to the tune of $2,000. So, um, to your point, I, you know, none, none of this is written in stone, right? Like, if it's not working for us, we can come back to you and say, this is or isn't working, and i-if we need bigger fines or other tools, I, I feel like staff does a good job of coming back, uh, and working with the council on things, so that it works for us. Uh, just a last piece on here I want to hit on is this displacement plan, because as we've seen in the feedback, people says, said no one else is doing this. Um, really, my hope here is that this helps us be prepared to respond and take care of our community, is, we've had a number of these incidents that we show up and we're displacing a number of residents in the middle of the night, in the middle of winter. And really, my goal is to have like six, a, 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 a simple questionnaire that they can fill out, uh, kind of a framework to help them, uh, tell us what's available to these residents. Things like, do you have an immediate place that residents can go, such as a clubhouse?
Yeah.
Or a community room? Uh, will you provide food for the displaced, displaced residents? If so, um, for how long? Will you provide temporary housing for the displaced residents, such as hotels? And if so, how long? Uh, will you displace, uh, place displaced residents in, if vacant, in vacant units if it's available? And lastly, do you require renters insurance? And then there's a few follow-ups to that, because one thing we found out is a lot of these properties require renters insurance, and, um, they offer, what they're telling people is renters insurance, which is really liability insurance for the property, and folks have unfortunately experienced a loss, and then they go to find out that really they only have liability coverage and none of their contents or anything are covered. And by having that information, that allows us to be prepared. So when we show up, do I need to call Red Cross? Do I need to call Salvation Army? Do I need to look at a shelter? Uh, because lots of times, the local manager doesn't know these answers, and at 2:00 in the morning, we might not be able to get ahold of a corporate person that can make those decisions. So knowing what to expect, because on many of these situations, we've been told one thing, and we're waiting for them to follow through on what they said they'll provide, and then they don't. So I would rather be prepared upfront, so that when our responders get there, we can care for the community in a timely fashion. That's the idea of a displaced, uh, a displacement plan, is, is what is available, what are they willing to do and not do, so that when we show up, we're prepared to help the community.
Okay. Uh, Chief, uh, Councilmember Gustafson has a question, and then followed by Councilmember Schultz.
More, more kind of a statement, I guess. Uh, this kind of reminds you back to 2005 when we first did a rental licensing, and we didn't charge a fee for it.
Nope.
We had everyone sign up for it, uh, multi-housing, actually signed off on it, on that whole thing. Uh, part of what happened in those days, we did, did education, we had our meetings, and we had a STAR system, and the good players, if they weren't getting violations, they weren't getting fines. And the ones that were there all the time, they were getting some heavy fines, and they escalated every time they got more and more violations. So I, I like the approach you're doing on this. I think that worked well for us for a while, but we didn't have any teeth in it, and that's why we ended up in 2011, I think it was, when we changed it to a much more strict rental policy, and I'm afraid that, again, because of bad players, unfortunately, and of, ordinances quite often come from bad players, that we're now looking at having to take it the next step again. I do like, I do like the, the free, I like the education that everyone gets, including someone that buys a house and wants to rent it, and just so they have an understanding, because not everyone that buys a house and rents houses understand what's all needed and all that. It's, uh, it's a, it's an interesting conversation, it's a, it's a national conversation that's going on. Uh, in Kansas City last year, they were talking about it, and Washington DC this year, they were talking about it. A lot of it had to do with the REITs coming in, and, and the big organizations that come in and buy buildings, they buy several buildings sometimes, they don't take care of them, and we don't know how to get ahold of them. And it's not just Burnsville, it's the entire
Country.
country is going through this right now. And so we gotta get a handle on it, and uh, I'm hoping this is just another arrow in our quiver that can help us get some things done, and maybe, maybe it's some, some things, some other cities that are struggling as well can take a look at as well, for solutions, because as a lot of you know, we all get together as, as governments all over the country and talk about, uh, our problems and our solutions and, and share all that activity. So I, I think your approach is good, and we'll see how it evolves from there.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, so this is a question about the displacement plan. Um, so they need to fill out the displacement plan, but they do not need to, there's not requirements of what they do provide. It's just do you or don't you, and this is what it is.
That's correct.
And again, that's for a single-family home rental? Yes, no?
I'm sorry, no, only multifamily.
Only multifamily?
Yep.
Okay, so that helps on that. Um, I have a few other questions. Do you want me to run through them or give other people a shot?
Uh, well, let's see if the, 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 the Chief needs to finish his report.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, this is the last slide, so we're good.
Okay, this is your last slide?
This, yep, I'm good, so I'm done presenting.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, uh, let's see. Okay, so first question, um, on the battery, I noticed the battery, like someone not having a battery in, or a working battery or that type of thing, and a smoke detector would be a $200 fine?
Uh, Madam Members of the council, that's only in a common area. That's
But that's not in the unit?
Nope. So, uh, in, in Mr. Forsland's rental, uh, fee schedule for code enforcement, it's $20 for a unit. So if they come in, it's a non-working smoke detector, that's in our current fee schedule.
Okay, and so then that is just in the common area, it's not in the unit itself, correct?
That is correct. The $200 fine for life safety violations is only in the common area, so it would only apply to multifamilies that have a common area.
All right. We answered that question. Could you explain to me what the background check is going to be looking at for the property manager?
There's no background check.
Where, can you give me the reference to that?
Uh, yes, so, uh, 3-28-4-2, property management license, and it talks about the license required, and one of the things that they need to do is successfully complete a background check and pay a licensing fee. Correct.
328-
Property management license. And that does talk about a licensing fee, so I had a question, if that was in conflict with some of the other language, which was saying there's not a licensing fee?
Yeah, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't think our intent was to have a background check, so I don't, I
I don't.
Mr. Shepherd, I don't know if you can, if you have any other context on that, but from what I recall, we, that wasn't our intent, that may have snuck by us, and there was not a license fee. So, um, the council would have to adopt a license fee in the fee schedule, and we're not proposing any.
Okay, so if, if we were to adopt, that would be something to strike?
Correct.
Would be
I would agree, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we get down to 3-28-6, license fees. There again, it says annual license fee, licensee must pay an annual license fee for each licensed rental unit.
And that is with the, the license fee for the property, that's not specific to the manager. That's outlined with the, um, the, the property rental license, that's not to the manager.
Okay, and again, it's the same as it always was, there's no change, a single-family home has a current license fee? The only ones that don't are owner-occupied, am I correct on that?
That is my recollection. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. No, I don't, yeah, it's only
Yep.
rental.
Mr. Shepherd, I see you agreeing with the Chief.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a question under 3-28-9, additional requirements, under G, which is a new one. Uh, license shall be conspicuously posted in any dwelling operating as a new one. License shall be conspicuously posted in any dwelling operating as a rental unit in the common area or if it's, you know, conspicuously posted where, you know, that most tenants can view it. If I am renting a home, I do not want your crap on my wall. That's unreasonable. That seriously is unreasonable. People are renting a single-family, they're renting homes that look like that because they want the feel of a home, not an apartment. That's unreasonable. So that posting, I believe, is unnecessary. Let's see. Okay. Explain the self-inspection. I'm happy about that. You explained the battery. I think I'm getting to near the end of my questions. Let's see. Okay, so 4-2-7, design standards under swimming pools.
We're not on that.
Is that a separate?
That's the next one.
That's the next one, sorry.
Wrong one.
Oh, well, it was still under Agenda Item 5E title.
They're both. Both ordinances are 5E.
Okay. So we will
That, yeah.
Adopt this and then we go into, thank you. Okay, then that is the end of my questions and I thank you very much.
Mayor and council, may I just make a comment just to make sure that
Mr. Shepherd.
When we're, when we're talking about eventual approval of this ordinance, we are going to be striking the license fee that we discussed under the property management and the background check. So you would be approving it with that.
Okay. So the amendments will be included?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Chief?
That's all I have for presentation. I appreciate the time.
Councilmember Gustafson?
More thanks, Chief. What is, what is our procedure for inspecting multifamily homes?
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, our code enforcement inspectors go through each unit every three years. So they do a third at a time. So a third of the individual units every year. And then if it has a common area, there's a fire inspection of the common area every year.
How do we get to the inspection?
How do we get to the inspection?
How do we, do we just show up at the building?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Notice.
It's getting late. Madam Mayor, Members of the council, those are all scheduled inspections. These are not surprise inspections. The only way we would show up under a surprise inspection is if we had a complaint, we may show up to go investigate it. Or if, for example, our crews are out on a call and notice something egregious, they're going to address it right then and there. But the license inspection is a scheduled inspection that we, that works for both the licensee as well as our inspectors.
So they know when we're coming?
Absolutely.
Do they know what we're looking for?
Absolutely. There's a self-inspection list that's published out on the website for them.
Okay. So it's not a surprise if they know we're going to look at
Oh, so they just wanted to title
Doors and all these different things. Okay. I just want to talk about the fine for a minute.
Okay.
Is that, is that something we just find them if we find something when we go there? Or is it they get fined if they just don't take care of it after we've been there?
So the, Madam Mayor, Members of the council, there's an additional fine in the common areas for egregious life safety issues that they get fined with the violation right up front. So if the fire alarm system doesn't work or they've shut off the sprinkler system, we can fine them for the life safety violation right up front. So they can, they can get the violation to get it repaired, but there's also a financial penalty to those, what I would call egregious violations. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Okay. I'm just clarifying our procedure. So what we're looking to do, even though 5E is one, one item, we're going to do a vote on Title III. Then we will talk about Title IV and do a vote on that. Then we will do a discussion and vote on Title V. These are all separated out instead of on individual agenda items.
Mrs. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Schultz. The Title III came through the Code Review Task Force at a separate time. Title IV and V came through together. So those were separate ordinances that came through the task force and that's why they're separated. But, so we need one motion for Title III, one for IV and V, and one for the summary publication.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Chief, don't leave.
Yeah, you're not. I have a feeling you might be going to see one.
We have people who have signed up and they want to speak. Donna Jensen, please come to the podium. And your name and address for the record.
Donna Jensen. Property address is 14709 West Burnsville Parkway. For being open and honest, I'm a member of the code task force. So just so that you know on that part of it. I was also one that was not 100% happy with this section of the code task force because I come from the property management side. And I think this section of the task, the code, needs more work. I don't think you have teeth in it that are addressing what I'm hearing, that there are REITs going out there and buying up properties that are not managing properly. And yet in Burnsville, we've had so many turnover in our properties that I couldn't tell you the name of some of them anymore. I can't keep track who's who and what's what. And that's not one property, two property, that's half a dozen or more on that part of it. So perhaps one thing I had to thought with as I spoke with MHA and getting them involved, because that is our organization in the state for multifamily, is that maybe when those properties are sold, there should be something in our code that says, okay, you bought this property, this is your first license, here's a walkthrough of it, here's what we expect from you, your fire doors, your smoke, your areas, so that there is absolutely no question what is required of these companies coming in. So that anytime that a new property license is done. And then maybe that's something we have to look at for some of these properties that are failing, that have been owned for two, three, four, or five years, that we need to back them up and go, we need to have a one-on-one. We need somebody at city, or whether it's a fire or the code, or somebody to walk through that's signed off. And it's not just the property manager. It's got to go up. I only have so much power, I have so much ability, but there are going to be other people that are property managers just trying to survive day-to-day for that job. So when you put it on there with due diligence, what support teeth does that person in that position have when they don't have the upper levels supporting them, when they don't get the ability to follow through on code? But they got to still support their families, they got to still do this stuff. And yes, they want to do the right thing, but if you don't have the upper levels up there, and that's very evident from what I'm hearing in the background, that it's not up there, what do they have for options without fear of retaliation or something else going on? So I agree, punish those that are doing the fine. And the fines on that part, when it is egregious like that, yes. When it's something that's not and we get a chance to fix it, because I can't tell you how many times I've had it. And thank goodness my residents back me. It's yesterday that thing worked. Today my inspector comes in, pushes a button and she squawks. It's not working. But we're doing our due diligence. So I would say on this section, it needs more work. Yes, it needs more teeth. Licensing, I'll get over it. There's no cost and there's, and the education, I'm always for that because I've already taken one of the classes that were offered from the Lutheran on that. But I think this section needs more work to address what we're seeing because we're getting lots and lots more properties. They're not going to be new forever. And new doesn't mean without problems. So I think on this, it needs more. And I'd be happy to stand in and work, but I don't think it's done. And I don't think it's enough to address what you're looking at. Because we're back where we were 2011? Why? And I don't hear that. I don't see that. And I know it's not a perfect answer, but there's got to be something more there. Instead of us just, okay, we're doing it now, five years from now, we're going to be back here again. What are we really doing to try to keep from the extremes that I'm hearing and seeing in these?
So Mrs. Jensen, this is a first step, but I hear you and you make a good point. So I think our chief also has some remarks in that regard. Chief?
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, I would just note that, and I'll double-check with Mr. Forsland, but the licenses don't transfer. So a new owner would have to apply for a new license, which would also require, they'd likely bring in a new manager that would have some education. And again, to Ms. Jensen's point, this may not be the end-all-be-all. We may be, find some holes as we move forward and we're happy to have that discussion and continue to work on it, right?
And I'm so happy that you're part of the task force because you bring a knowledge base in the industry that you're in. I mean, as a manager of a property. So that helps a great deal. And thank you for all the work that you have done there. So hang on just a moment. Councilmember Schultz.
She brings up an excellent point. Thank you very much. What if a property manager can prove that they've been trying to address things, but the owner will not, and now you have the manager worried about losing their personal license? What protections do they have?
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, I would tell you that in our experience, we get a pretty good sense of that really quick with our inspectors on where the roadblocks are. I can tell you, we've had managers tell us, I'm not doing that, we don't need to do that. And that's what we're trying to prevent with this. We've had other managers saying, I can't get approval on this. And we can tell you where the roadblocks are because the managers that want to fix it talk to us and we're not going to go after their individual license. That's when we would be looking to the council to take more action on the global front of the property license. But I would tell you, a lot of the violations are fixable if there's good property maintenance and a good manager being proactive on those things because then they don't become capital assets that need to be replaced so quickly if they're maintaining them well. But yes, if they're, if they're trying and they can tell us and prove to us they're trying, we're not going to, we're not going to bring any license action against the individual when they are doing their best and they're running into roadblocks. That's not their issue. We just want them to take the effort to try to fix it. It's not their fault when corporate doesn't approve it because they all have limits on what they can spend and what they can do. And so when they're trying their best and they've moved it up the ladder, then we don't want to take any action against those folks that are trying to do their best.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Keighley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your work. Government's run by those who show up and you're always here. You do a great job. Thank you for all that work. You brought up a very good question. How did we get here? Earlier, Chief Johnwin cited that every, every year, a third of each of these apartment complexes are inspected, except for a period of time when this small little diversion called a pandemic happened and inspections on sites got diverted. And it allowed things to continue to deteriorate that could have gotten caught. And I think that, you know, today we have the ability to go everywhere and inspect and we're starting to see lots of things that we hadn't had a chance to see in a couple of years. So I think your concerns are valid and I'm very interested in, you know, more of, more specifics of what you think this section needs and more work. At the same time, I want to give the chief and the inspection staff every tool they can as soon as they can because the problem did get really bad during a period of time when inspections were challenging or not happening. And they may have had a valid excuse at the time for that, but not anymore, for at least not having inspections done. And maybe chief want to touch on what happened over the pandemic, just so everybody knows.
Madam Mayor, Members of the council,
Chief, and then I'll come to Michelle.
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, during the pandemic, there were, there were many properties that didn't, didn't want us in their property for reasons of not spreading the virus. So there, you know, there was a period of time and I think it speaks to the fragility of some of our properties when they fall off the radar and kind of how close we are to the edge on some of those. So yeah, there were, there were some properties that went a couple of years before we could get into them during that, during the pandemic until, like you said, in the past year. Now we're kind of back in full swing, but now we're kind of seeing the full view of what happens. So.
Mr. Shepherd.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to follow up, close a loop on Councilmember Schultz's question about property managers and their ability to sort of protect themselves. There are appeal rights built into the code. So if there was a revocation action taken or a suspension taken, they have, would have the ability to appeal and assert that they, you know, whatever their basis for that appeal would be.
May I? Do they have to pay anything to appeal?
Do we have an appeal?
Yes, we do have a fee for the appeal process. However, the hearing officer has the right to waive that fee if she feels that, that she overturns the violation.
Yeah. I would frankly feel better if for property managers, that there was no fee for the appeal since we're not making a fee for the license.
Well, I think the chief addressed that when he said, when a manager can say, you know, I'm trying to make it work, but I'm not getting the financial resources from the owner of the property to do that. And you said that we will work with them and understand. Chief?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Members of the council, we might be talking kind of two different things. I think, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be bringing a license action if they can show that they're working to get it fixed. I think Councilmember Schultz's point is if we do take an action and they need to appeal, do they have to have money come out of their pocket before we find out where the, whether or not the appeal is sustained or overturned?
Yeah. Well, that came out of Mr. Shepherd's remarks, that there's an appeal process. But not when you were talking to us about what happened.
If I may ask,
Yes.
What would we need to do to change that?
Mr. Shepherd.
The appeal fee is just in our regular fee schedule, correct, Michelle? Yeah, so we would have to amend that.
The appeal fee is set at $100 for, to appeal a code violation or a rental strike and $300 to appeal a license suspension, denial, or revocation.
At what point do we get there after the chief, after they had talked to the chief about something?
That would be only if we did revoke, deny, or not
So after all of that, the chief went through with having that, those conversations with the property manager and still nothing happens is when that happens. Now, is the revocation with the ownership of the, of the company or with the property manager?
And I think that that would be based on staff.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Members of the council, it depends on what kind of license action, right? Are we going after the manager's license or the rental license?
And I'm looking at manager.
You're looking at the manager's license. And I don't think our fee schedule delineates. We could bring something back to clarify that in the council's fee schedule if they desire to not charge an appeal fee for the rental or the manager's appeal. But I would tell you that it takes council action to suspend or revoke both a rental license or a manager's license. None of that is administrative. That would all require a council action.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Workman.
So just for clarification, council would have to vote to revoke said license?
Yeah.
Then the fee would be assessed if they did not agree with council's final action?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the council, if, if council took action to suspend or revoke individual manager's rental, or individual manager's license and they, they wish to appeal that, then the fee would apply.
So prior to the appeal process, the manager would have that opportunity here as we normally have those items and could speak at a public hearing at no cost.
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, that's been our past practice is that we notice them ahead of time that this is coming before the council so they can come speak to that as we did with the recent rental license suspension.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next speaker is Mr. Cecil Smith. Please come to the podium. Mr. Cecil Smith, come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record. And I understand that you represent the Minnesota Housing Association.
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Cecil Smith. I'm the president and CEO of the Minnesota Malta Housing Association. We represent 2,200 owners, operators, developers, vendor members in the rental housing industry, with 600,000 renters who make their home in more than 300,000 units of housing across the state, some of them in Burnsville. I'm here today because I'm very concerned about the direction that we're taking here. And having heard some of the comments tonight, that we have a lot of good actors, good managers, good operators in the city of Burnsville, and yet we've got some bad actors that we need to address. But we have a regulatory framework that's been established here that is inclusive of everybody. And I would like to And I would like to suggest a strategic reset on the regulatory framework that you're developing because we get to see a lot of regulatory frameworks across Minnesota, at the state level, and even amongst our peers across the country. And to develop a framework that targets the bad actors versus one that is all-inclusive and puts a burden or a regulatory measure on everybody who already is engaged in best practices, has their business model and business practices that they're engaged in with good effect for the residents and the city and to the approval of the regulator. So the framework that I would suggest is that you should have tools in your toolbag that address the bad actors. Actions like tenant remedies action, where you can get repairs ordered and the city can take action on behalf of the renters when there is no compliance with your orders. Or even receivership, which if you want to get the attention of national REITs who are maybe considered, in your view, absentee landlords, if they do not control the asset, their investment is null and void. Their investors inspect them and their bankers inspect them to maintain control of the asset. Receivership takes that away. And then you can actually manage the property the way you want it managed through the actions of your receiver, who is paid through the proceeds of the property. These are all tools that people have in their toolbag that focus on the bad actors, including fines that escalate when there is no response or a delayed response. Further, change of ownership inspections. If you're concerned about the nature of a property because it's being passed around, then have a change of ownership inspection and write up the orders. They need to be written up at their property. This approach shifts away from being all-inclusive. Now, some of the ideas that have been proposed in this ordinance are excellent and sound, but again, should be targeted to bad actors as a condition of license. You've met a certain threshold of bad behavior, so now you will write a displacement plan. You will have your property manager licensed rather than just registered with the city and you will need to have education and training. You will have a log that you maintain of your inspections, subject to our review, which we may ask you to supply to us on a monthly basis. This kind of scope and approach narrows the actions of the city to bad actors rather than including everybody. And I'm bringing this to you today because we came late to this. We only became aware of this about six weeks ago. And even a week ago, we weren't even aware that this was going to be on your agenda tonight for final passage. Our members, our industry has a lot of experience. We have a lot of very good actors in our state, especially our local ownership. And we would urge that you take a pause, reconsider, and think about the strategy that you're embarking upon here because to maintain the investment and the partnership that you have with the good property managers and owners in your city, reward that behavior with a light regulatory touch and use a scalpel-like approach of regulation to go after the bad actors. So we applaud your effort. Bad actors are no friend of our industry. I have to go all around the state dealing with the consequences of what bad actors have done to communities because they try to remedy it through a regulatory approach. And I would urge the city of Burnsville, rather than acting first of its kind regulations in the state in terms of licensing property managers, displacement plans, that a pause be taken to reconsider that. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the chief because he's had at least three conversations with us, has been engaged with us, but we would recommend that approach.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz, would you come back, Mr. Smith? Come back to the podium, Councilmember Schultz.
So my, thank you very much. My question to you is, does your association have a certification program for property managers?
We do. We have a certified resident manager program and it's quite extensive in its training and development.
Are those names public who have received their certification?
Most of them put it as a designation after their name because they're very proud to earn their designation as a certified residential manager. We don't have a published list, but we know who is eligible because they have to complete continuing education requirements every year, at least five credit hours a year.
Okay. The other question that I have for you is, do you have something like what the Board of Realtors has? So say a property manager is repeatedly not doing a good job and they're, you know, like going from place to place and just crapping all over it, right? Conversely, like a property owner, right? Like, you know, they're crap. Okay, so do you have something within your association that is similar to what the Board of Realtors has to kind of police your own?
So what we have is because we are just a trade association where you freely associate. If you break our code of ethics, and every member has to review the code of ethics every year, then if there is a complaint brought against you, our ethics committee reviews the complaint and we have dismissed members from our association and even on occasion given lifetime bans so they cannot join us.
I have a question. So what is the difference between what you're doing? What we're doing is that with a management license, it's free, but we're holding them accountable. So what is your objection to that? And you have a licensing, what?
Now, we have a certification, which is voluntary.
Okay.
So I might suggest that the city of Burnsville may want to, because of the circumstances that the chief's described to us, maintain a register of property managers, that when there's a property manager that works at a property, you want to know who's working at that property, just as you probably have a provision in your code that says you want to know who the license holder is and how to get hold of them on short order. Then if you have a problem with a registrant, then start enforcing against them, okay? You're a registrant who is now going to be on probation and you're going to have to do this education. And if you don't, then we will ban you from the city. That's a lighter touch on all the other property managers who are acting and doing their jobs and getting training through their professional associations and so forth that they are part of. And then focusing on bad actors who you identify and will quickly identify and then can say, "All right, you are now in a separate status." And eventually you may actually work to the point where you say, "You can't work in our city."
That's what the management license is all about and nobody's going, that's holding them accountable. And we do then, through that methodology, have a log, if you will, to use your word, of who is working in the city. I don't see the difference of what we're doing and what you're suggesting.
So registration versus licensing is a lighter touch. Registration, you have a registry and you maintain a registry versus licensing where, I mean, up until a moment ago, we assumed that there was background checks, so that seems to have gone away all of a sudden. So that's background checks, that's the training that's required and the city certification of their training as well as a test. And that's just another thing that's put onto the plate of a property manager who's acting professionally, doing their job, and it's another hoop that they have to jump through versus registry, which is, "I'm on the registry as a property manager in the city. I'm a good actor. I'm not drawing any attention to myself because I act professionally." That's a much lighter touch.
Thank you. Members of the council, we've heard from our chief. Is there anybody else who wants to speak but did not sign in? All right, come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Nicole Wilkins and I work with Trellis Management. I oversee Chancellor Manor, which is a property in Burnsville. It's 200 units of affordable housing and I learned of this just a week ago and I wish that I would have been included and part of the task force. I think it's really important to know that, like everyone else has said, it's the bad actors that need to be held accountable, not the good actors. I've been doing this for 28 years and I take much pride in my properties that I've maintained, not only in Burnsville, but in other cities. So just last week, we completed our annual city inspection and we were complimented on how well-maintained and how stable the staff in place gave us that outcome. I understand the importance of ensuring that all rental properties in the city meet certain safety health standards and I urge the council to consider the unintended consequences that may arise from the changes. These code changes call for licensing of all property managers. That's really concerning to me. A lot of the questions were answered, Kara, that you were, those are a lot of my questions, the background check, the personal responsibility to the property manager, that was very scary to me. It's hard getting staff to be property managers, especially in affordable housing. It's a rough event. In some instances, a property manager may not be able to procure the funds from an owner, like previously discussed, for necessary repairs as thus put in a very difficult situation. You're basically putting the property manager in between the owner and the city. This is a personal risk for a property manager. It could cause a property manager to be unable to find other property management employment in the city or even elsewhere. Recruiting site staff could create a whole new level of challenges. If I were a property manager considering the city of Burnsville, it would impact my decision. As I mentioned, staffing is currently challenging. With this said, the proposed changes may make it more difficult for landlords like me to maintain our properties in compliance with the new codes due to staff shortages, which then could lead to unintended violations and penalties. This could ultimately discourage responsible landlords from investing in the community and negatively impacting the quality of rental housing. Therefore, I respectfully request that the council take a balanced approach to revising the rental license codes, one that considers impact on both the landlords and the residents, and works towards achieving the common goal of ensuring safe and affordable housing for all. I personally would like to participate in a collaborative approach with the task force. Invite me to the table and I thank you for the time and I thank you for your service, chief. My brother is a Minneapolis firefighter, so I understand the dangers that are faced. I thank you. I thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Ma'am?
Wait a minute, Councilmember Gustafson?
We're taking applications for the task force.
Yeah.
You are?
So you can go online and sign up and be interviewed for it.
We have openings.
We have openings for all that.
So it's on the website?
It should be on the, yeah, it's on the website.
Okay, thank you.
We're always recruiting.
Councilmember Workman.
Yeah, exactly, always closing.
I think there was some logical things said by the gentleman from the Housing Association. And I do like the idea of a stepped approach here, maybe starting with a registry and then moving up to formal action. I'm not saying that that's the direction that I'll vote for, but I think that there was some sound logic in that idea and that assists in, I think, alleviating some of the tension that our staff might face with our good property owners. Because I think there will be some pushback to this. So I guess I wanted to get that out in the air, that I appreciate the feedback by the gentleman from the association. I think that seemed reasonable to me, but I'll let the discussion continue.
Councilmember Schultz?
So I have a question and he spoke about write-up orders. Could you, are you familiar with that process?
The registry?
No, 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 write-up orders. So a rental unit is just not fixing things, like their fire door does not close. We've told them, told them, told them, we find them, it's not happening. It appeared, he was speaking about write-up orders, which would be, we would say, "This has to happen by this date or we arrange for someone to come fix your stuff and you are charged for it." Is that correct?
Mr. Smith.
Process? Apologies, could he come up?
Mr. Smith?
So there are mechanisms through state law, through the tenant remedies actions and the statute, Minnesota 504B, that provide that municipality, if there's unresponsive, they can ask for a tenant remedy action and then there's a judge's order that's issued. So it's due process and obviously it's a last resort mechanism. Even higher than that is receivership, which also happens through the tenant remedies action where there's a court-appointed receiver because there's just been a transigence, obstructive behavior, and the city runs out of patience, as it should. So that is, cities are empowered to do that. You have the ability to do that so that situations like Parkview should not be happening. They should be in receivership, given what the evidence has been showing to me.
Okay, if I could ask our police chief, so I know that we've done this.
Fire chief.
Sorry. Police chief's back there, fire chief over here. Our fire chief, so I do know that we have, like, we've done this route. Could you explain the timeline on this and the challenges that we have encountered in taking this route?
Yeah, what's the cost?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so it requires a civil action and Mr. Shepherd's going to be much more equipped to handle that, but I would tell you.
Mr. Shepherd is in queue.
It's significant staff and legal time to file these actions and the other issue is getting in front of a judge is not always timely. I can tell you, the last one we filed, it was like a six-month wait to be heard in court and I would defer to Mr. Shepherd to talk more about details, but.
I'll go to Mr. Shepherd prior to Councilmember Gustafson. Mr. Shepherd?
All right, Mayor and council, I think with the receivership, we're sort of asking the wrong question. That is an enforcement mechanism. So when we think about tools to enforce our code, we know that we have suspension, revocation, the council's very familiar with that. We have a civil action for injunctive relief, the council's very familiar with that. There's also hazardous building actions. And receivership, tenant remedies action is in the mix there for potential when it makes sense, but it is a significant investment. And what we're talking about here, all of these amendments are designed to clarify the obligations of landlords to the city and to their tenants and to make sure that everyone understands what they're supposed to do and to make sure that they are meeting their expectations and obligations of the code. That this is not about what we will do ultimately. All of that is sort of fact-specific, right? Whether an individual property manager maybe is causing the problem or really the large focus is still going to be on the ultimate owner of that property and making sure that they're going to get things done. And we know what those remedies are, but those really aren't being affected or changed by our code amendments here. What we're trying to do is provide a little clarity on if good property owners are already inspecting their code, well, then they shouldn't have any problem inspecting and creating inspection checklists and making sure that we can confirm that they're meeting their obligations that they already say they're meeting. The displacement plan, this is whether it's a good landlord or a bad landlord, we're talking about a fire that could happen and whether they're ready to help protect the residents in the aftermath of that. And that can happen whether you're a quote-unquote "good landlord" or a bad landlord. So really, we're really trying to get at these ongoing expectations for our property owners.
What is the difference between what they're saying, a registry, versus what we're doing with a management license? I mean, because it seems like the same thing. It doesn't cost them anything. We just want to know who they are so that they're not going from one property to the next and causing a great deal of harm within the city.
Mayor and council, I'm myself struggling to figure out what the difference is being proposed. It seems like when we have a licensing scheme that doesn't require a background check, doesn't require fees, I understand Councilmember Schultz was concerned about the appeal and the ability to protect their rights and have due process. Makes sense. What we're really talking about is a hook to get that property manager to buy into our expectations and obligations. And I don't, to me, and the council can obviously make this choice, but I don't think that's a super onerous ask. And we know from our experience that the property managers do have an effect on how fast things get done and how property issues get addressed. And we know that from very recent experience. So that is sort of the backbone of the proposal that we've had.
Yeah. Councilmember Gustafson?
I'm on the task force as the liaison, as you all know. And I'm still learning a lot about this tonight even. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this almost seems like an educational ordinance. What you're looking for is that people take best practices training, and they get licensed to do it. We don't charge them for any of that stuff. The landlord themselves, the landlord themselves for a displacement plan could actually say, we're not going to do anything if they have to displace. And that's going to be acceptable. So I don't know what's so hard on it, asking people to spend three to four hours a year or every three years to look at one of our classes and say, these are the best practices for running buildings in the city of Burnsville, and these are our expectations, and go from there. It doesn't seem that tough a deal.
Yeah. Chief?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would agree with you. Like, this gives us the tools to deal with the bad actors, but sets a level playing field of what the minimum is for everybody. And again, we don't want it to be onerous. Yep, are they going to need to take some online classes? But whether you manage one unit or 100 units, making sure that you have some of those life safety features, that you understand some of those things. And then by having that manager's license, it gives the council the ability to act quicker so that we're not drawn out 14 months to deal with something. We don't want these. As you know, we don't bring a lot of license actions in front of you. And as staff, we want to work these things out and work with the property managers. And really, that's our goal. And if I could, Mayor, pivot back to what Councilmember Schultz's question was about the tenant remedies. My understanding, and Mr. Shepherd, correct me if I'm wrong, but once we were to get a court order that we could fix that fire door, for your example, the city would have to go get bids, get that fixed, and assess it back.
Do the bid process.
Yes. So then we are taking on the repair process.
Yeah. And it's costly. And it's costly. Councilmember Schultz, you're in queue. Did you get your question answered?
Nope. I'm still being a PETA.
Okay.
Okay, so...
What's a PETA?
Pain in the...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so...
Apple?
Right. So question, one thing I have is I do want to reiterate my question and idea of amending that we would strike having to post the manager license. I think that's... Now you're dictating, because you don't have common spaces in many of these rentals. Now you're dictating what a person who is renting the place has up on their wall. And that's, I don't think that's acceptable. But my question is, and this will be to our attorney, is there a problem if we just change the word from license to registry?
Mr. Shepherd? And Chief?
Mayor and council, yes. I mean, if we're just registering them and just taking note, then we don't have any regulatory hook. The license is to say you have to have a license to operate as a property manager in the city of Burnsville. If they do not comply with the obligations under the code, we have the ability to revoke or suspend that license. If they're just a registrant, there's nothing, there isn't that hook. And so it doesn't matter whether or not, and there's nothing to do to sort of attack their license and therefore get, ultimately get the property owner to have a property manager in there that is going to take care of business.
Okay. The reason why I asked that question is when it was asked before what the difference was, it was said that there is no difference. So that's why I was wondering if the issue is calling it a license versus calling it a registry.
Councilmember Schultz, I think I was just struggling with looking at ultimately the why he was asserting that and what the ultimate goal was. I was saying there was no difference in terms of like the actual, how onerous it is on the individual to sign up to be a licensee. You know, to me, there's not much, you take, you sign up, you take the class, you get a license. Right? That's what I was struggling with as I was sitting there listening to the proposal. That's what I meant. Sorry if it was confusing.
No, I get that. So the difference between like a registrant and a licensee would be, on the front end, they take their four hours of classes every three years. They got to fill out the forms so that they can be licensed, right? But they have to do a yearly self-inspection of the property or when property changes hands. And then the other difference is if you're just a registrant, you can't remove their license and remove their livelihood. But if they're a licensee, that is the punishment mechanism. And it is, since it's a license, you can remove that from them, and it affects livelihood ability within this career field. Do I have that framed correctly?
I don't know that you have it framed from the city's perspective. It's not about removing their livelihood. It's about making sure that they're meeting their obligations under the city code. So...
So their livelihood, so they would still be allowed to be a manager in the city of Burnsville then? If their license was removed? I don't...
No. If their license is revoked, they are not allowed to be a property manager.
In the city of Burnsville.
In the city of Burnsville. That's correct. But the city is concerned about making sure that as a property manager, they meet their obligations under city code. If the property manager is meeting their obligations as a licensee under city code, they won't have any issues.
Yeah.
No, I totally get that. And the framing that I'm using is because I'm trying to reframe the concerns that I'm hearing from the audience and from our emails. So I'm trying to make sure that we're acknowledging that concern, right? Because like, I know what we're trying to do. And then I'm trying to make sure we understand what their concerns are, and so that, like, we're all getting on the same page. So it's not a derogatory framing. I'm not meaning to do it that way. I'm just trying to restate what I'm hearing from others closer to their language, but still being accurate. Right?
Fair enough.
Okay.
For me, it's really, there's a voice of the residents, the renters of these properties that's not heard here. We have folks from an industry that is talking about all of this. And what our staff is saying is that there has to be a mechanism for us to understand who is operating in our city. It's not going to cost them anything, but it also allows them to be accountable. It allows them to make sure that they comply with the code. And also, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think they have a log that they have to also comply with, so that at least you can take a look at it because it's online. And you can tell that they're doing what they need to do to make sure the building is safe and also in a state where people's health are also taken into consideration. Now, that's what I'm hearing you proposing for all of this. So Councilmember Workman?
Thank you. And I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but if we've got, I'm going to do it anyways, but if we have a, you know, a husband-and-wife team that owns single-family property, and the husband, his license is suspended, you know, what's stopping the wife from then obtaining one? And then the son, and then the daughter? And, you know, this problem continues to fester? Obviously, that's a very unique and obscure situation, but...
I can name a family.
Usually, you know, the single families are, you know, it's kind of a family business. So I don't need an answer to that necessarily, but I just am trying to think about all the variables.
Councilmember Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to like bring this idea to a close on whether we need to have this license for everybody to start with, even the good players? Or is there a path from any other sort of starting point? To the gentleman's point, what I think he was getting after, and I think we all agreed, it was we were getting to the same end result, managing the bad actors. I think what he was articulating was a step-up program. So everybody starts with assuming that they're a good actor. And in many cases, we would have some immediately graduate almost the next day to a bad actor, and it would trigger this license. So to the city attorney, is there a path to start out with a registration but trigger the license for anybody that has hit a certain threshold? I mean, is just trying to put some mechanism, a process in place like that, something that's feasible for us as a city?
Off the cuff here, I think having the property management license sort of just ad hoc, based on the problem in individual property, I think that's problematic. I think it needs to be, whether it's licensing across the board. Some of the other provisions, you know, you could do obviously the inspection checklist if you didn't want to do that right away, but say, okay, they've reached a threshold, they're not meeting their obligations to, every time we have an inspection, clearly they haven't inspected. Yes, that could be part of some sort of suspension or restricted license, if you will. I think some of the other things, as I was trying to mention with the displacement plan, to me, that is a plan that applies across the board. And I struggle to see what's so problematic or onerous with it myself. It is just, hey, if you own a multifamily residential building, things can happen. So we just want you to think about it and let us know if you've thought about it. And that way, when staff is having an emergency response, they have something to go on to help the residents and help the community. So I think it all kind of depends on which particular, you know, major or minor edit you're talking about. So I can't give you kind of a straight up or down, but there's a way to do it. Yeah.
City Manager Lindberg?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, from my perspective, from a staff perspective, I hear the council's policy discussion and certainly respect the feedback that you're getting. The framework, and the city attorney mentioned this, is really about a clarity of expectations around the four areas that we've talked about. The licensing, but more predominantly, from my perspective, both education, the idea that we're working alongside property managers and property owners to self-inspect, to get ahead of and prevent certain situations from unfolding. And to the city attorney's point, kind of the plan to make sure that we can take care of the community should a really bad event happen. I would say from my perspective, what's in front of you right now is a balanced approach. I think it is uniquely Burnsville. I believe that it addresses, through the work of the Code Review Task Force, it addresses the issues that we're facing. And to me, those issues are twofold. It's really public life safety for our community, the folks who are living in our multifamily housing. And it's all about staff safety. If you think back to the video that the chief showed as part of his presentation, we not only have firefighters going into these situations with a heavy amount of personal protective equipment, we have our police staff with less personal protective equipment, or fire admin staff with less equipment going into these situations. And the last thing, as your city manager, but more importantly, as the person who's responsible for their work, their lives, their safety, and ultimately is accountable to them and their families, this is about taking care of our staff, ensuring their safety as much as we're ensuring the community's safety. So from my perspective, I think this is a reasoned approach. I think these questions are good. The dialogue is good. But at the end of the day, I'd submit to you that this isn't about good or bad actors. This is about all of us in Burnsville, taking, being very clear about what's expected in these situations, and ensuring, at the end of the day, that our staff are well-cared-for, that our community is well-cared-for throughout multifamily housing.
Councilmember Schultz?
Just so I get an idea of the scope of the issue, about how many, how many property managers or property owners that would then become property managers do we have in Burnsville? And do we have an idea of how many of those are problematic to where they're hopping to property to property?
Chief?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll turn it over to Mr. Forsland. I know we've got over 10,000 rental units.
Right.
I couldn't tell you the number of properties. Last I knew, we had about 85 complexes. That makes up the vast majority of the units. I want to say we had 1,200 or so, single-family. So you got the 1,200, single-family, that may be managed by individuals, so you could have as much as 1,200 of those. But some of those may own multiple properties, right? And then you have the 80 to 100 managers of the multifamily. As far as some of the bad actors, I can tell you right now, just on the fire side, and I'm not speaking for the code side, I have eight properties I am triaging to come through right now of enhanced enforcement, just because of fire code violations that I know about in the moment. So roughly 10% of the current multifamily complexes have significant fire issues that I'm concerned about.
Oh, yeah, okay. So how many of those eight is it the manager that is the issue? And how many is it, does it appear, that is the property manager? Or, I don't know, both are partners in crime? I don't know.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm a bit off the cuff on this.
I know. I put you on the spot.
But I would tell you, probably two-thirds are things that could have been managed by the property manager but have gotten out of control. There's another quarter to a third are vast things, like the replacement of the attic sprinkler system, that they haven't followed through, right? That's not a manager problem. When they have, they've gotten bids and they won't approve it, right? That's not their issue. It's the fire doors, the trash chutes, all those things I showed you, that if they were managed and fixed as they were broken, wouldn't have to be replaced. And so my off-the-cuff answer to you is about 60 or two-thirds to one-third, roughly.
Got it.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
So another question. So if we're looking at where it's 85 complexes, but 1,200, single-family, and the issues appear to be with multifamily complexes, perhaps we don't include single-family. Perhaps that's the step that we're looking for right now. I don't know. I'm throwing that out there. Tell me the pro or the con of that, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I couldn't speak to the fire code issues in the single-family because we don't get into it. Mr. Forsland could. I can tell you that was a recommendation of the Code Review Task Force that took discussion of where to land in the Code Review Task Force, brought the recommendation that all property managers, regardless of single unit or multifamily, get licensed. So obviously, I'm more familiar and more aware of the issues in the multifamily dwellings. And frankly, those have the larger impact, right? Someone not having something done there can impact more than one family. Not that each individual isn't important, but when you start talking about the scale of the impact, obviously, the multifamily has a larger impact. So I don't know if, Mr. Forsland, do you have a sense of, single families, as far as life safety issues, how many you would have?
I think you're right about the numbers.
Okay.
And as far as comparable...
And as far as comparable conditions, very similar to, they're all a single living unit. So, they're going to have smokes, they're going to have
Would you come to the podium, and just so that everybody can hear you and see you speak?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we're looking at a lot, the numbers that chief gave were approximately the same. They're, I think, very much along the lines of what we had talked about before. Single families are going to have a lot of the same attributes that a single apartment unit would have. They're going to have smoke alarms, they're going to have egress issues, they're going to have those kind of things that we're going to look for, just like, you know, in a multifamily unit, too. So, those would be of concern. You know, one of the things that we really hoped with this, too, is we could use this as an educational piece as well. This is what we want to, when we go in there, smokes are all working, pathways are clear, and reinforcing that idea over and over is very helpful.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Schultz.
So, I realize it's probably not 1,200 individual owners, like some, there'll be, there'll be some people that own like a couple of properties and that type of thing. In those single-family homes, we're also looking at corporations that own
Yeah.
multiple, multiples, right? And, sorry, I'm kind of thinking out loud, so I can get to this. So, I do understand the corporate aspect of that, that this is now acting as like a large business enterprise. So, even though the unit is single-family, the corporation is multifamily, like, you know what I'm saying? And I know I'm legally wrong, I know this. So, but, there's a difference between that and an individual owner, like just a family that owns a couple, even if they incorporate to protect assets. And I don't know how to delineate between those, or what the numbers are that we're talking about on that. Because some of this, I, you know, and I get, I get that there's no license, and I, or no fee, and it's a four-hour education and things like that. But now we're, now we're looking at possibly taking away someone's retirement, because that's, that's how people do these investment properties. So, I'm having difficulty on these, like, just a person owning a couple homes and renting them out, versus larger corporations that do this as a business and multifamily. So, I don't exactly have a question. That's, that's the one piece of this that I'm trying to puzzle out and figure out.
Well, isn't it about holding everyone accountable? And isn't it about the life safety of the renters? And, and that, this is what we're getting at, is the life safety of the people in our community. So, Councilmember Workman.
Just to that point, I want to kind of circle back to where we started. I don't think B.J. or Mr. Forsland are going to willy-nilly just pull a license.
No, I don't either.
You know, and so, it would take a dramatic
Yeah, and it comes before us.
disregard for the steps taken to get to the point of revocation. So, if somebody's retirement was at risk, it would have to be because they just said, well, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to do what you're telling me to do, which isn't, I don't, you know, it's not going to be something as simple as a smoke detector. I mean, we're talking about major life safety issues here. So, I understand what you're saying, but it's a slow-moving process, with steps for correction in between. So, you know, my thoughts on that.
Councilmember Schultz.
I just think that, I think when we're talking about doing, like, starting a licensing that could potentially affect 1,000 or so people, to where, before this was something they weren't licensed to do their job, and now we are creating an occupational license for that large of a number of people, it is a big change.
Yeah.
Like, that is a big change, and this is an occupational license.
But also, remember, it has to come before us for that revocation, to be approved. It doesn't just happen administratively. City Manager Lindberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. To Councilmember Schultz's point, it was the recommendation of the Code Review Task Force to include both single and multifamily. It is the council's prerogative. You could, you could very simply, tonight, split the two apart, or cover multifamily and not single family. That is within the council's purview, as long as this city attorney tells me that's okay.
Yeah, Mr. Shepherd.
Mayor and council, I think you could make that distinction on a reasonable basis. I do want to, to Councilmember Schultz's point as well, to think about, so sort of mom and pop homeowners, they're already going to be licensed as a licensee rental. So, they're already on the hook for complying with the rental code.
Yes.
It's just that because of this new property management scheme, they might have, be wearing two hats under the code, one of which is a license they have to pay for, the other one they don't, but they still have to go through the education. But just wanted to make that point.
And to City Manager Lindberg, and also to Chief Jungmann's comments, this came from the Code Review Task Force. It was their recommendation to do everything. And then I listened to Mrs. Jensen, and she says, "We're not doing enough." And I always think about the people, the people who live in those residents, whether they are in multifamily and also in single family. It is they who are, who are our residents, and tonight, they don't have a voice in this discussion. And that we're their voice. We've gone down this road before with all kinds of things, and that's what we need to do. Chief.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as City Manager Lindberg said, and City Attorney Shepherd, I would just, if we split those two, multifamily and single family, I would just want to have clarity, if the council wants the single family to also have the education requirement. Whether you license them or not, do you want whoever licenses them? Because we require either the owner or the manager to live within 75 miles.
Yes.
So, if they live out of state and they have someone else managing it, do you want them to have the education requirement? I just, for the sake of clarity moving forward, whether you license them or not, does the education requirement for the single family still stand? I guess is, is the only question I would, I would want some clarity on.
Yeah, well, from my perspective, we want the education, if it's going to be split. Why? It's about the health and safety of the people who are living there. At the end of the day, that's what it's about. Councilmember Gustafson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To your point about the single-family homes, I worked with investors and mom and pop buyers for many, many years in real estate, and they buy those as investments. They buy those because there's passive income every month. They try to acquire as many as they can, so that they can actually make a living off of that. Most of the single-family ones that I've dealt with, in my experience, have been pretty good about taking care of their properties. Not all of them, you do have a couple out there that do the thing. The problem, the problem I see with eliminating single families, we have a lot of REITs that own single families in this city.
That's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, that's the big thing, is we have a lot of REITs that own it, and they're not going to do it, and we're kind of stuck. Again, this goes back to, to me, this just seems to be a continuing education ordinance, is all we're doing here.
Yeah.
Making sure that you get best practices, and you get your license, and take care of your property. Most of the property, when you talk to these property owners that rent, they want to do the right thing. I mean, it's some of the bigger ones that aren't necessarily wanting to do that, but that's their problem, and I don't know how they get away with it, but...
And the other thing is that we've had complaints from neighbors from rental properties where they are not taking care of the yard.
We get that with owners, too.
And then they have all of the, you know, garbage all over the yard, and it has an effect on the neighborhood. So, the thing is, this is about education, this is about making sure that the community as a whole is continuing to be vibrant.
Yeah, and it's all about, it's all about the safety. That's really, the bottom line, we're concerned about the safety
It is.
of people that are renting out here, and they, and when you rent in this city, you should have a reasonable expectation that you're going to be in a safe home, it's going to be up to code as much as it has to be, and, you know, I can't, whether the cupboards are good or bad, that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at safety issues right now, and that's all we've been looking at for many years in this city. And so, I think this path helps maintain our housing stock, which we need to do.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't let our rentals go down, because that's going to affect the single families, and probably everyone in this room has, lives close to a rental home in their neighborhood, and they don't want to see that just turned to junk. So, we got to stay on top of that stuff.
All right. Members of the council, if the deliberation is satisfied, I need
The lady wants to talk.
A resident that wants to speak.
Okay, come forward and, you know, I usually take, when people sign up, then I know who needs to speak, but give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Spiwed Jefferson. The address of my property is 14112 Park Avenue South in Burnsville. So, I am the mom and pop investor that Councilmember Gustafson was just talking about. I'm a, I'm a lawyer, and I have owned single-family homes in Burnsville for nearly two decades. My personal code of ethics is that I will never rent a property that I would not live in myself, which was just as well, because I got divorced a lot of years ago now, and I had to live in one of my properties. And it was, it was great, until my husband was awarded the property, along with a few others, in the divorce settlement, so that was that.
The dirty dog.
I agree with Councilmember, is it?
Schultz.
When you talked about how the focus should be on the violators, and, you know, and I also wanted to address the display of the rental licenses as required by, as I read it, Section 3-28-9G. I completely agree with Councilmember Schultz in objecting to the posting of the licenses in the home. And so, I have one rental property in the city of Burnsville. It is a single-family home, and I have three rules for my tenants. Number one, you have to take care of the property. Number two, you got to pay your rent on time. And number three, do not cause trouble for the neighbors, because if you do, you are out of here, right? Those are material breaches of my lease, and I don't even have to wait until the end of the lease term to kick people out for those three things, right? And so, my tenant today has a lovely home. She takes great care of it. It's beautiful. Chances are, nobody who walks into that house would know that she was renting that house. And she probably doesn't want people to know that, right? And so, I would, I think it would be a, an undue hardship for me to have to tell her that for the sake of a property inspection that's going to happen this one day, for the other 365 days of the year, she's got to post this thing in her house. And I have lived in single-family homes, I've lived in apartments, and I expect, I think you expect to see things like that in the common areas of apartment buildings, just like you expect to see those license and inspection certificates when you walk onto an elevator. But I've never lived in an apartment building where I've had to post that in my unit. And so, what I would suggest is, you know, I understand the goal of it, and I think the objective is to make sure that there is a license, right? Not to make sure that everybody else who walks into this house can see it. So, my suggestion would be, yes, absolutely, require the licenses you always have, or at least, as far as I can remember, you have required the license. But perhaps if you're going to require a posting, it would be more appropriate to have it posted in the public areas of multifamily units, as opposed to the individual units themselves, because somebody said, you know, your apartment is the same as your home. I think that's true. My home is my cocoon, is my safe place, and I don't want to see anything like that if I walk into my house. And I would hate for my tenant to have to be subjected to that, simply because she can't afford to buy her home the way I can. So, the other thing I would like to address is the way I read the amendment, 3-28-4-2. And this is the one that, wait, hang on, is that the right section? I want to address the section that talks about the, yes, it is. It reads, "A license. No person may serve as a property manager for a rental unit within the city without first obtaining a license, successfully completing a background check, and paying a license fee." So, my questions really are around the background checks, and I'll just sort of rattle off the questions that came to my mind that I wasn't sure were adequately answered. So, what is the purpose of the background check, and what would it screen for, and how would the information be used? Who would be responsible for conducting the background check? If the property owner, like me, is the property manager, then who conducts the background check? And where is that information housed in order to protect the privacy of the subjects of the checks? How long is that information retained? How often do the managers have to be subjected to the background checks? And if some adverse action is taken because of the background check results, will the city then disclose that to the manager? And I understand the desire to address slum lords, and personally, I think you absolutely should. I was shocked by the, whoever it was who fraudulently changed the label on the door. That's horrible. That's absolutely awful. And, but, as far as I know, and I haven't been a criminal defense lawyer for a long time, but being a slum lord is not a crime, right? It's horrible, but it's not a crime. So, it's not going to show up on a background check. And so, you're not going to be able to screen for that, because I think that's part of the goal, right? You want good landlords. And the other thing is, I happen to be an employment lawyer these days, and I'll spare you the history of how this came to be, but the EEOC prohibits employers from discriminating against job candidates by denying them employment to, if they have certain kinds of even felony convictions, right? And so, although the city is not an employer, it is a state actor, and what you have here is you've got managers who are employed by multi-unit owners, right? And so, I was, I was concerned that depending on how this background check is used, what you may be doing is, you may be creating a situation where the property owner is required to hire a manager, even if there are certain things that show up on their background check. But then here comes the city, and then penalizes that same manager that then may not be able to actually conduct the job that they were, that the owner had to give them in the first place, and there are good reasons for that, right? So, if the felony conviction had nothing to do with the job they're doing, and it wasn't recent, and, you know, there are other parameters, then people are allowed to hire candidates, employees with convicted felonies. So, I was wondering if the city has thought through that part, because I don't see it here. And so, I would encourage you, before you put this background check requirement in place, give some thought to, what is it that you really want to accomplish? And who is it that you really want to tailor this requirement to, so that it does what you intend, in the way that it should without discriminating against certain employees?
Okay, thank you for your remarks, and I think I'm going to go to Mr. Shepherd, I think on a back I think on the background check, we, you might have come in a little later.
Yes.
Because that was...
Ms. Jefferson, we've already discussed that that provision for background checks and the license fee
Is not.
is being stricken. It was erroneously put into that section of the code.
Yeah, so it's...
Oh, good.
Yeah. So, you went through all of that, but you might have come in after that was identified and stricken. So, it's not part of the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Before we vote, yes, please come and give us your name and address for the record.
Quick, because I know it's getting long. My name is Dave Beddoe with the Steena Scott Management. We operate a property at 1701 Burnsville Parkway called Burnsville Parkway Apartments. We are a management company, part of the founding members are investors in that property. So, they take great pride in it. We are, one of our big mottos is...
The name of the property again is?
Burnsville Parkway.
Yeah.
We used to be called Inland Hills back in the day.
Yeah, yeah. And, yes, and the owner was very involved when we did the rental licensing. And I thank you because a lot of the rental licensing came through the owner at that time, yeah.
And we, and that's, we're very involved and we would have loved to have a voice in, in creating this ordinance that you're working on. I think that we, and I know that many others that might not have understood that this was a possibility to be on a task force, would have liked that opportunity to be able to have our input.
It's on, it's on the website. So, you can have someone from your organization be part of the task force.
Could I clarify that task force?
Yeah.
That's dealing with all of our ordinances.
All yours, okay.
Not just housing.
It's not just housing.
It's about a two-year commitment to, as well.
You never know. I might have had somebody that would be interested in it. I don't know if I would have been, but it might as well.
It's about everything. It's about the code in the city that was promulgated probably when the city was a township. And we were going through all of it.
Well, I kind of want to talk about, we, we, one of our mottos is, we do the right thing. And we do the right thing on a daily basis. We do it for residents, for owners, for our coworkers, and for our community. And we're very involved in our community. And we take it, great pride in, in having a well-run building. And that we, we just had our inspection, I think, and we got one, one small thing that was found in our common areas and was corrected the same day.
Right away.
But I've heard three to four different things about striking a couple of different parts of this ordinance. Also, just, you know, some things that look like they need some more clarifications. So, I would really ask that you reconsider voting tonight and that you go back. We do a little bit more work on this. Maybe we could work with the staff and help with cleaning up some of the items that, that have been addressed tonight. So, I would just, just ask that, that you step back for a minute, review some of the comments that you've gotten tonight. And maybe, if, if possible, involve some of the players, including residents. Because I know you've talked about you speak for the residents. Well, maybe they can speak, some of them can speak for themselves. They might have some feedback that you hadn't even thought of yet. So, maybe there's an opportunity to sit back, talk this through a little bit more before you go on to vote.
So, you object to the education process? So, Chief, if you can put up the four things that...
Here's what, I don't, I don't object to it. But what I, one thing I think that you're, we're not considering is that you're, you're asking for us to do self-reporting. We do a lot of reporting internally already, yep. So, we already, we already have it.
It doesn't bother you that you need to self-report so that we could have? We know that you're doing the right thing.
When we send out those reports into your staff, who's going to review those? Who's going to check them?
Chief?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the multifamily self-inspection is a log that they keep on-premise. And when we come to do both the fire inspection and/or the annual third of the units, those inspectors can ask for those logs.
So, they're not getting sent in to be, because to me, it just, it sounded like there's probably going to be extra administrative burden and an extra expense. And I'm assuming that the license fees, I know that like, we're not going to have a license fee for a manager, but we're going to have license fees to have a license for the, to be able to occupy the building. And those fees may be increased to help cover some of the costs, I'm assuming. Have those, is there any determination or anything for additional fees?
No, that's, you might have come in late. That has never been part of the discussion.
Okay.
And there is no cost to the license for the managers. What we are trying to get at is education, continuous improvement, and making sure that there is a displacement plan in place if an incident happens. So that our fire chief and all of our first responders, when they get there, know that there is a plan. And that we are not responsible for the displacement and the relocation of the residents. So, you may have come in a little later after the chief had given his full report. But there's, I mean, it was very, we've been working with this for a long time. Now, the owner of your property was part of when we did the rental licensing. And I think that was back in 2004?
Five.
Five? And then, of course, a lot of things continued to happen. And we were the last resort and we did shut down. And revoked a license for our property. And that's because the residents looked at us.
That sounds like you might have some more that you need to do that, too.
And we, we do it in a very thoughtful, thoughtful way, you know? We, we don't jump at it right away. Our staff does a lot of work to try to get people to comply, fix things, make sure that the health and welfare of our residents, your renters, our residents in the city of Burnsville, are cared for.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone before we vote? Okay. Come, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Tracy Wetzel and our current property is 2404 Highlandview Avenue South. And I've had several rental properties in the city over the last 11 years or so. When I started, it was basically you had to have a pulse to be a landlord. And now, it's, there is, then there was a next tier and there was a next tier. So, it sounds like this is kind of like a new phase. And I think that a very extreme comparison, but like gun control. I would say plenty of people would be for banning assault rifles, but it's the idea of it starts there and then it just continues. So, it just feels like, I feel as a mom and pop landlord, that it's changed so much over the years. Yes, it's for the better. When we renew our license, she's always like, oh, you're the best. What, we do a great job. However, it's, where does it, like, it just is the progression, I think, that some people are worried about of right now, there's no license fee. Well, before, there wasn't a, there's no license for the fee for the manager right now. But there wasn't a license for the fee previously. There was no inspections previously. So, it's just the idea of what type of progression will happen. And then the other piece is just on the educational video or training or whatever. Will there be separate training set up for multifamily versus single-family since it will be such different standards of, I mean, it's kind of two completely different ballgames of what you're looking at? So, those are just family.
Chief? Madam Mayor, members of the council, we haven't decided on that. Actually, a lot of the things are the same, you know? Whether the sleeping units is a single-family or multifamily, having a smoke alarm in some of those. So, there, there is a fair amount of overlap, but at a staff level, we haven't decided if we delineate between those or not, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I just, one of the points was, I was going to confirm that, yes, there's no change to the license fees per this ordinance. And the second thing I wanted to make sure the council was aware of is that the city staff has sent out a notice to everyone who has a rental license to their email address, letting them know before this council meeting, as of last Thursday, when the council packets went out, and before every code review task force meeting as well. So, if some of you did not get that notice, please make sure that you connect with the rental license office because we may have a wrong email address for you.
Sir, you wanted to speak? And now, give us your name and address for the record for the correct item that I think you're interested in.
Okay, Ron Olson, 13202 James Avenue South. I'm a mom and pop renter. And I just want to keep that in mind and, and doing these amendments or regulation that some of us, and I have other friends, too, that depend on one rental for some retirement income. And I just want to say, you know, be careful about the regulations because I want to tell you a story that happened to me not too long ago. Where I had some health issues and I couldn't reply to the, to pay the fee, my rental license fee. Had health issues and I missed it. Upon finding out about it, I paid it. I provided documentation. But they still sent out a warrant for my arrest. And I was arrested in Minneapolis and spent the night in the Minneapolis jail. Not only did you go to court and the judge said, what are we doing here? He threw it out. All the fines, all the fees. So, I want you to be careful.
Was that from the city of Burnsville?
Yes, this was some, the city of Burnsville. Your county attorney even said, I don't know what you're doing here. I presented this stuff. I still have documentation of where I was and my health issues. And when I found out about it and I paid my fee and was caught up and I said, can you just forget the court date now? No. I still had to go to court after being in a, the jail was Minneapolis jail.
Okay.
So, I just wanted you to be careful about where, where some of this goes with mom and pop.
Yeah, we'll look into that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Members of the council, where are you at at this point? I think we'll just have to let staff take a look at that and find out what, what's going on.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gustafson?
I, I think we could talk about this all night. We're not going to have a perfect ordinance out of this. And my experience since 2005 with rental ordinances, it continues to evolve. And if things aren't working, we can make changes. And if they are, we don't have to make changes. But we have to start doing something somewhere here. Because it's not going to be perfect and I don't think we should throw out the whole ordinance because you got a couple of pieces that may feel a little off. So, I'm in support moving forward.
Okay. Do you want to separate out the multifamily from the single-family? You are on the task force.
Not necessarily, no.
You want to have, keep it as the recommendation from the task force?
Again, we're talking about, it's an educational ordinance. That's all it is. It was just best practices.
Okay. So, there's a motion by Councilmember Gustafson. Is there a second?
Is that a formal motion?
Yeah, it was a motion.
Didn't sound like one.
Hold on, I got a tie. It's a formal motion.
I think Madam Mayor turned it into a formal one, I think. You were just saying, I'm in support of it.
Councilmember Gustafson, you make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? I second the motion. And...
Will you accept an amendment?
Ask the maker of the motion. And the amendment is?
The friendly, I'm asking for a friendly amendment. And that would be to strike posting the license, strike the background check, strike the license fee for the manager.
Okay, there is no fee for the manager and there isn't a...
Background check.
And there is no...
It's written in here. We have to strike it.
It's in the background. We have formally striking it.
All three of those amendments.
So, all of those that we had talked about and that was...
Already talked about, yeah.
Yeah. But everything stands. It's only those details in the ordinance.
Right.
Okay. As the maker, yeah. Mr. Shepherd?
I think I heard that he accepted the friendly amendment.
He did.
Yeah.
We have a second?
I, I seconded, yeah, for the friendly amendment. But that, but all we're doing is we, it's the things that we had already talked about. No background checks.
Yes.
Yeah.
No license.
No license fee and no posting.
And there's no fee because it, it was always no fee.
Posting in residence?
In single-family.
In a single-family.
Single-family, okay.
Or inside the apartment itself.
Well, I don't think, I, I don't think the chief had anything to do inside the apartments. It's only in the common areas of the multifamily housing.
That's what we're amending.
Yes.
We need to make the amendment to get to that language.
Understood.
Okay. So, it's only in the common areas. And I believe, Chief, that's what your report was.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, originally, it just said in the dwelling unit and in the common areas of the multifamily building. I think we're clear now that nothing for single-family and in the common area of the multifamily. So, I think we're clear.
Okay.
Perfect.
Very good. Okay. There is a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you. And that was for Title III. Now, we move on to Title IV.
Madam Mayor, I have to excuse myself for the rest of the night. I have a personal commitment that I have to make. I'm excusing myself from the meeting.
Okay. And Councilmember T. D.
Thank you.
Yeah, you are excused.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to the next part of the ordinance. And this is Title IV, Building Regulations. And Title V, Fire Regulations. Mrs. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have Title IV and V grouped together tonight. And I have in here somewhere. Where is it? Move that out a little so I can. I've got here a list of the significant changes to Title IV and Title V. We do have a couple of our staff subject matter experts here. If there's something in particular you'd like to have a question to, otherwise, I'm happy to stand for questions.
Members of the council, Councilmember Schultz?
All right, let me pull her up. Because I jumped the gun before. Okay, so, when we're looking at 4-2-7 Design Standards, the language stricken took out on A. Before, it said, "All public pools shall be designed to the standards of the International Building Code of Minnesota," blah, 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 blah. And then it updates the building code of that. Why are we going to, why are we striking public?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, public pools are licensed by the Minnesota Department of Health.
That's right.
They're also, they're also subject to their internal plan review. The actual construction is under the Minnesota Building Code.
Okay, so, this is talking about new construction, which is why you're saying all pools?
Correct. It would be to new construction.
Okay. So, existing, we're not changing anything with existing?
That's my understanding, no. Because existing pools would have already been reviewed and licensed by the state of Minnesota.
And that includes private ones in people's backyards?
No. Public pools only.
Okay. That's just what I'm making sure is very, very clear because that is one of the questions that I, I received. So, there was, we had a homeowner having a moment of panic.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't believe so, but let me just check. No. I have no further questions.
Okay. If there are no further questions, members of the council, are you ready to vote on Title IV and Title V and accept the changes?
Moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. And I now need a motion for the summary ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Chief Gentman, and Mr. Forsland, and Mrs. Collins, thank you, Attorney Shepherd, for all of your hard work on all of this, and also a big thank you to the Code Review Task Force for all of the work that they continue to do every month, and all the reading that they put into evaluating all of these codes.